Welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming to our hazardous waste school. We're going to have a look at how hazardous waste incinerators work, and in particular, how the Norlite Hazardous Waste Incinerator in Cohoes operates. And we have four national experts on tonight's panel who will present information and take questions, including Jane Williams, who is an environmental economist, who has worked on air pollution and hazardous waste incineration for 30 years. We also have Jim Pugh, who is a staff attorney in Earth Justice's Washington DC office. Earth Justice is the group that, with the Sierra Club, filed the lawsuit against the DOD about the incineration of A triple F and how it could violate the National Environmental Policy Act. We have Bruce Buckhite, who served in the federal government's efforts to manage environment and safety issues, starting in the Ford administration and continuing into the administration of President George Bush II. And we also have, oh, I think that's everybody. Dr. Neil, sorry, Dr. Neil Carmen, who holds a PhD in botany from the university in Texas and has conducted wind-ranging research in phytochemistry, looking at the function of secondary plant organic chemicals, such as phenolics, alkaloids, and terpenoids. He has worked as a staff member for the Lone Star Chapter of the Sierra Club and as an advisor to the Galveston-Houston Association for Smog Prevention. He has worked in diverse efforts to clean up cement kilns, hazardous waste, and medical incinerators, concrete batch and hot mix, asphalt plants, aluminum diecasting plants, copper smelters rendering plants, coal-fired power plants, fuel tank farms, and many other of these industrial facilities. So that is our lineup for our panel tonight. And I don't know if we want to hear a word from Jane Williams before we start?
I just want to thank the panelists for joining me today. And I think everyone will learn a lot from hearing about their number of years, numerous years of experience with hazardous waste burning in these kilns. So I just want to say how much I appreciate them giving up part of their evening tonight. And with that, Neil, I think we're going to kick it off with Neil, right?
We are supposed to kick it off with Neil, but I don't know if he's here yet.
Okay, well, let's just switch up the order then. Bruce, you're here. So why don't you talk? Why don't you tell us a little bit about what your experience is and what went on with Marine Shale, which was one of the first kilns in the country to start burning hazardous waste?
Be glad to, and thanks for the opportunity. Well, who was Marine Shale processors? At one time, it was the largest hazardous waste disposal company in the United States. It was founded by a very colorful fellow with a lot of connections to the New Orleans mob. He used the proceeds from a savings and loan scam to buy a lime kiln. He had this idea that, yeah, it had just been regulated in Alaska that spent drilling mud, which is drilling mud with hydrocarbons in it, could be treated, should be treated, rather than sitting in open ponds. And, you know, he could make a lot of money with a monopoly to treat this waste. Well, some others in the state thought they also might want to get involved. And so the whole idea of monopoly disappeared. And with it, the whole idea of regulating treating spent drilling mud in Louisiana. This left this operator with a multimillion-dollar white elephant. His lime kiln was roughly 12 feet in diameter, 100 and something feet long. It was originally used to tumble dry and calcine oyster shells to make lime.
Neil, we're on this call for Norlite.
Yeah. And so he started accepting hazardous waste from anybody and everybody, and including a number of federal agencies. He did not have a Ricker incinerator permit. He caged up the argument that he didn't need one since he was a recycler. And this is before the days of what's known as BIF permits. And so he wouldn't have to do anything on the Ricker side. What did he make? He made ash. He called it aggregate, but he had no formula. He had no particular use for the product. Because it was a batch process, the properties of the material varied widely. He had a fairly limited water permit that he kept exceeding and going back for additional increases over time. Same thing with his air permit. He basically violated every statute that one could. I should mention that as we proceeded to enforce against this activity, our first federal judge had to recuse himself after our good friend attempted to bribe him. And his associates were found guilty. He, quotes, beat the rap by asserting that he was not part of the enterprise to buy the judge. His friends were going to buy the judge and then sell the judge to him. But they were sort of entrepreneurs themselves. He had very strong contacts and influence with the state legislature. He got the head of the state Senate Committee on Environment to testify at his trial as a character witness. That trial ended up as a hung jury. And at the end of the day, EPA Region 6 denied his BIF permit because of his past transgressions. And he ultimately sold out and went out of business. So what is the, by the way, I should tell you, this enterprise by the Justice Department, I was a senior counsel in the Justice Department at the time. We had eight attorneys assigned to the case, backed up by eight paralegals. We moved 18 wills worth of documents from DC to New Orleans in October. And that trial lasted through March. That was the jury trial phase of it. It was then a bench trial on air and water issues that went into the summer. The federal investment in this was enormous. And I would say that in today's budget, that would never, could never be happened again.
Bruce, a bunch of people just joined the call. Could you just reiterate the name of the person that you were just talking about? And the facility?
Well, the facility is Marine Shale Processors, which was down in Morgan City, Louisiana. It was a sort of a shady enterprise that used an old lime kiln to burn any and all kinds of hazardous waste with no particular formula or controls. And it was the subject of a very large DOJ EPA enforcement action roughly 20 years ago now. What did we learn? Well, one thing we learned is you should move in fast on these types of activities. That had we proceeded when this company first started doing this kind of stuff, it would have been a whole lot easier and quicker than after he started spreading money around the state and visiting congressmen and whatnot to pursue the matter. He got more sophisticated over time, and it just became a whole lot harder to deal with the sham recycling case that was involved. What we need to do in this kind of a thing is to understand the nature of the operation. Marine Shale, and I would say and Norlite, makes two products. One product that they make is an aggregate. The other product is empty hazardous waste drums. They, while aggregate production may or may not be continuous, incoming hazardous waste tends to be unpredictable. People will schedule, you know, quick, I need to get rid of X, Y, and Z, and I'm shipping it to tomorrow, and then they have to deal with it as it comes in. It may be more set in Norlite. You know, I haven't looked at Norlite at all. But in the Marine Shale process, it was sort of random. Whatever came through the door, they would have to deal with it. Okay, and for that reason, emissions and aggregate properties varied widely, depending on whatever waste was being burned. A lot of their waste, by the way, was high in metal contact and then wound up being part of the aggregate itself. The other thing I would point out to folks is you need to understand what the test results, the emissions test results that you're seeing, what they mean really. Most all testing that you'll see for a company like Marine Shale or Norlite or others, if this is not unique, is what's called reference method testing. And in my trade, in the enforcement trade, this is known as the beauty contest. Because it tells you what the source can do on its best day, not the source is doing on the days in between. Why is this? Well, the source knows the schedule, okay? The source will be told months in advance, hey, on June 1st, you know, you need to do a test. And it's not the government, it's not the state that does the test. The source retains the testing company. And the source tends to stick with those folks who, over time, give them the best results. The source has an opportunity to optimize the pollution controls, to make sure that everything's properly maintained and operating during the typically three hours of a test. And the source, and this is important for a batch process like Marine Shale, the source has the opportunity to optimize the process during the test. We were able to produce, force Marine Shale to produce in discovery, a 20-page memo that laid out how they would change their normal operating practices and what kind of materials they would burn during the state-required stack test. In the utility world where I spend a lot of time, there've been a number of instances where companies keep what's called compliance coal, a separate pile of coal, different from the coal that they burn every day, just to use during testing. You know, so the bottom line is, when you see reference test results, understand that's the best the source is likely to be able to do. And it doesn't tell you a whole lot about what goes on in a year or two or more between those tests. The keys to understanding the emission performance of a facility like this is knowing the fuel quality, operational stability, and the pollution control efficiency. The way to understand, the way to know fuel quality is with random and frequent sampling of the fuel for metals and BTU, pretty much. Operational stability. What temperatures are going on inside the kiln? Are things running steady? Or are you seeing sharp spikes up or down? Up can get you into an issue with dioxins and furans. Down can get you in issues with what's known as PICCs, products of incomplete combustion. And the pollution control efficiency. And I did see one thing in some of the enforcement history for Norlite that I was provided, where they failed to, it appears, they failed to, how do I say this? They failed to ensure that the bag leak detection system was working. What is a bag? A facility like this will today have what's called a baghouse or a fabric filter. This is a huge box with a large number of, it's sort of like your vacuum cleaner, but it has more bags on the inside of the vacuum cleaner, and they're bigger. And so you might have, at a power plant, you might have 1,000 bags that are 20 feet long and 18 inches in diameter. And then the air goes through it, just like your vacuum cleaner. If one of those, or two of those, or five of those 1,000 bags are blown, are leaking, the pollution control efficiency drops, not a little. It'll drop from like 99.9% or better down to 20%. And so the emissions that occur when you have bag leaks that you don't respond to immediately can be rarely quite significant. And, you know, the issues are, you know, again, metals, PICCs, and the dioxins and furans. I'll just close by saying, you know, what are the protective measures that citizens can try to get into permits and, you know, to do the best we can with these kinds of facilities? I would say early and aggressive enforcement to set a culture at the facility. It's too late for that, both at Norlite and at Marine Shale. The regular fuel sampling, continuous parametric and emissions monitoring, where you monitor the things that you know control the performance of the system. And all of that, with today's technologies, can be set to a publicly available website so that the members of the public can have access to that data and understand what's going on inside the facility. I would not expect, in today's world, that the state or the federal government will have sufficient resources to do more than a cursory, pardon my phone, but it's going to ring. They're not going to be able to do more than a cursory check every once in a while. We're still in the political season here in Virginia, I guess. So, and I guess the last thing I would leave you with is you can, and a lot of, not a lot, but there are a number of communities that have gotten good outcomes by forcing EPA to do what's known as a community health assessment, where they come in to see whether there's a hotspot for different cancers or things that tend to show up as a result of exposure to HAFS, hazardous air pollutants. Thank you.
Okay, are there questions for Mr. Buckhite?
Again, Mr. Buckhite served in the federal government's efforts to manage environmental and safety issues, starting in the Ford administration and continuing into the second Bush administration. And I do have a question for you, Bruce. Norlite has what's called Venturi scrubbers. And just this year, they were, they settled with the EPA for violations to the way that they were operating their Venturi scrubbers. And I'm wondering if you know what those are, can explain how those work?
Well, I know what a Venturi scrubber is. It's sort of a pre-control device. It spins the gas so that the heaviest materials drop out. That would be something that I would expect to see before a fabric filter. Now, this may be, for instance, if it's just at a rock crushing activity, it may be the only control. If they're just looking at keeping out dust from crushing the rocks. But it's a crude, you know, first-order pollution control device that basically relies on gravity to separate the big stuff from the small, large stuff.
Yeah, Bruce, they have a Venturi scrubber, a fabric filter, and then they had a wet scrubber, now they have a dry scrubber.
Yeah, so the Venturi scrubber would be the pre-cleaner, if you will, to take out the big stuff before it gets into the baghouse.
They also had violations associated with the exit temperature of the gas.
Yeah, see, that's what I'm talking about is process control. What they're looking at is, you know, they get paid to destroy hazardous waste, and they earn money selling aggregate, so the two revenue streams. If they get too much high BTU material in that they need to move, they need to get through their system because they only have a certain amount of storage, they may not be properly blending. And if you get too high a temperature, that's when you start generating dioxins and furans, which is, you know, really, really toxic stuff.
Right, for those on the call that don't know, could you just explain what dioxins and furans are briefly?
If you think back to Love Canal and Times Beach, okay? These are highly, highly toxic. They're carcinogenic and mutagenic. BCD, they're long-chain chemicals that are so toxic in very minute amounts. What happened in Times Beach, I happen to be involved in that one, I do go back a ways. People were using oil, they had, for recreation, people rode indoors, rode horses indoors in these sort of stadia. And to keep the dust down, they would spray them with oil. Well, somebody had a contract to spray the facility with, you know, the dirt floor with oil. Also had a contract to get rid of some materials from a pharmaceutical company that contained dioxin. And not very much dioxin. And as it went on, horses started falling over dead from exposure to the dust with the minute amounts of dioxin. You had, you know, three or four big dioxin cases in the 70s. And again, Love Canal was New York's version of that. And it's very difficult to control. You really have to watch the operating parameters to avoid too much of it. And since it's so toxic at such low levels, there's not a real monitoring network that can pick it up. It's not going to be routinely sampled in the stack gases. This is where you'd have to do a community health assessment or something like that to try to find it.
There are some questions starting to flow into the chat, and we still have a few minutes with Mr. Buckhite. So I would like to open it up to members in the audience who might have a question, if you want to unmute yourself and ask a question of Bruce.
I have a question. I live here right next to the plant. And I smelled like a gas, like smell, the other day that when I went to take out my garbage, it made me so sick. Like I got very nauseous, and I started getting cramps in my stomach. So my biggest concern is what is going to me when I'm breathing this in? Because I have a child here, two kids here, with asthma. And since I've moved here in 2014, I've been experiencing upper respiratory issues. I have to go and have a GI testing done. And I'm concerned if it's because of breathing all this in. You know, I've been trying to move out of here because I don't feel safe here.
Yeah, there's no way for me to know from here. I would say I would not be surprised. I spend most of my time dealing with coal-fired power plants where the stack, the emission point may be, you know, 800 feet up in the air. Norlite is 100 feet up, 130 feet, so it's relatively low stack. And they're normally, the hot gases are buoyant, and they tend to go up. But you can have what's called plume looping situations where you have an inversion, especially this time of year in where you all are, where it just sits there, and so you get, you know, sort of the full dose. So it's certainly possible. And this is where things like fence line sampling, neighborhood sampling, and community health assessment. If you go, you know, get your folks involved to go to EPA and demand a community health assessment, where they come in and take a look at it, you know, in depth, that probably is your best step other than moving.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I have a question about the community health assessment. Norlite, the community learned this year that Norlite burned about 2.5 million pounds of A triple F. And there's a lot of concern in the community that that has had health effects on the people because the public was not aware that this was happening. And what is the best way to go about getting a community health assessment? Who do you contact and what do you say?
That's not my particular area of expertise. I'm the cop on the beat, but I would go to EPA Region 2. You know, and well, or start in Albany and see if you can get them to go with you to reach into.
We still have a few minutes if other people have questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ed.
Can you tell me, through your experience, the finished product that goes through the kilns, do you think, or do you know if that is polluted? Is that, I can't believe, I can't believe finished product go through those hot kilns. They're always worrying about the scrubbers and what's going up through the stack. But what about the material that's going through the kiln and comes out as a finished product?
That will depend on what they're burning. In Marine Shale, they were burning everything, including a lot of stuff that had metals in it. And so Marine Shale's aggregate was highly contaminated with almost everything you can think of, chromium, lead. And they were, the kids were being exposed to it. That's why we had a lead specialist from New York come down and do a lot of work in that case. So again, depending on what they burn, if there's metals in there, including mercury, it'll be in the product. If it's really just these lighter, what do I want to call them? Sort of petroleum-like products, they'll just combust. But if they have metals in them, they'll show up for sure.
Oh, you'll see, they say that the aggregate is being made into concrete. And that will, if there is any pollution in there, that it won't cause any harm because it's solid. But what about all that aggregate that's put on driveways and used ill?
Marine Shale made the same arguments, or they made the argument that, oh, once you put it into our aggregate, it's there forever. And we conducted leach tests where you expose it to your rainwater, which is slightly acidic. And it, no, it wasn't locked up forever. Now, again, I don't know Norlite's product, but in Marine Shale, that argument was tried and found to be wrong.
Thank you.
We have a question from Dr. David Bond of Bennington College, and then we'll move on to our next panelist. Dr. Bond?
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much for that really helpful presentation. I had a question about the reference method testing, where it seems like the facility has sort of complete discretion to organize and design the parameters for these tests?
No, no, that's not, that's not quite true.
Okay. My question, I can get more specific, is, do they also allow the facility to pick the waste it burns to test various things? So with our issue, A triple F, we know there's different formulas for A triple F that we're tinker with, but different manufacturers, different concentrations of the chemicals that we're concerned about. Does the reference method testing, when a facility does that, do they select the hazardous waste to burn? Or are they tested with the kind of, the stuff that's coming in, which is always mixed up with a whole host of other things as well?
They're supposed to be tested under what's called reasonable worst-case conditions. They will send into DEC a protocol saying, here's what we intend to do. Now, the actual chemistry experiment or physics experiment of how you determine how much of a quantity is in the exhaust or in the ash, that's what, when I say a reference method, those procedures for doing that chemical test are narrowly defined by regulations so that you get the same answer. If people did the chemistry experiment different, you'd get a different answer all the time. So the reference test specifies the particular way the reference test specifies the particular way to do it. But, but the company, okay, will say the protocol, well, here's what we're gonna test, you know, here's what we're gonna burn that day. I think a lot of times I, I haven't seen what Norlite says or anything. This is where the companies get to game the system. This is where you have the compliance coal pile instead of the regular coal pile. Okay, it, it depends on how sharp, uh, New York is at watching this. They know what's coming in on certain days and they know what day they're gonna be tested. So if they say, um, the test is gonna be on June 1st and this, that they will probably tell the state, look, we'll burn whatever's in tank number five, you know, on June 1st. Well, that means all May, they know what they're gonna put in tank number five.
Yeah.
So I mean, you know, what can you do about it? It's, it's difficult, but so my point is, uh, uh, assume that a reference method is the best case you're gonna see. Now, what you, what you could do, by the way, they should provide an assay of what it was that they did burn. So you can after the fact say, well, yeah, they burned X on June 1st, but if you look in April, they were taking in waste that, you know, had entirely different properties.
Um, yeah, this is Jane, you know, one of the, one of the key things, uh, Bruce is that they're supposed to take waste that doesn't have less than 5,000 BTU. So,
That does not have less than 5,000 BTU.
Right. Well,
They want, it should be a fuel, not a waste disposal.
Well, I know you say that, Bruce, but
It's supposed to be a
Come on, Bruce, you're just not with the program here.
Uh, well, I, 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 let me say this. I've seen it where, you know, marine shale took stuff that had basically negative, uh, chloric value.
Well, that's kind of what happened here where they took 2 million pounds of a flame retardant that's deliberately designed not to burn. And not only does it, not, no, hang on, not only does it not burn, it inhibits whatever it's mixed with from burning.
Right. So why is that allowed in their BIF permit?
It's, it's not, but the state said it was legal for them to take it. So
Why? I mean, I don't know.
Maybe they didn't read the permit. I don't know. But, you know, all the ways they take is supposed to have a minimum BTU value. And that's, that's one of the central problems here with Norlite is that we seem to be in a little bit of a permit free zone, a sort of an enforcement free zone. That's why I wanted to have Bruce come and talk because that's what, what happened at Marine Shale. You sort of had an enforcement free zone down there until Bruce showed up with his two tractor trailer full of documents.
Yeah. I mean, they, they, there's no, the whole idea of allowing with a BIF, industrial furnace, to burn hazardous waste is they're using it as a fuel. You know, it's these high BTU wastes. They think it's good societally to say, let's not force the generator of the waste to pay Rickert incinerator fees. After all, this is useful heat. This industry Norlite can make use of this heat. And so we'll let them burn it, but they have to have good pollution controls uh, instead of the has waste incinerator. But they shouldn't be allowed to take low BTU waste. Period. And I guess you're saying they're not allowed to, but they did it and
They did it anyway. Yeah.
Jane, file your lawsuit.
Thank you, Mr. Buckhite for that presentation and
I think there's one question, Mr. Walker.
Hi, I'd like to just add a remark with regard to Ed Sockle's question about is the material polluted? I agree with your assessment that the, uh, pollution winds up in the aggregate, but there's an enforcement mechanism that's running behind the scenes that makes that assured. So normally you would expect a lot of the pollution to lodge in the fly ash, which gets caught in the bag house. What they do with the bag house is they recycle it back to the input so that it's caught in the aggregate the second time.
Okay. So if any mercury gets up the stack, it's caught in the fly ash and goes back down. By the way, if, if power plants are, just so you know, if you, you're gypsum wallboard, these days it has more mercury in it than it used to before we started forcing power plants to control mercury. It's got, this pollution's gotta go somewheres.
Okay. So I don't think that Dr. Carmen's gonna be able to join us. I did leave him a message. So, um, Jim, why don't you just jump into, Jim Pugh, why don't you just jump into what's, what's the regulatory superstructure here that they're supposed to be complying with? And a little bit about how we went from the boiler and industrial furnace rule to now the hazardous waste, uh, NESHAPs max rule.
And Jim, could you also please introduce yourself? You're muted.
Hi, yeah, thanks for the chance to talk. My name is Jim Pugh. I'm a lawyer with Earth Justice. And I've been working with Jane on hazardous waste combusters and air toxics for a long time. Uh, and Jane asked me to, to talk about, um, sort of the regulatory side of this. And I'll, I'll try to do that. And I'll, I'll, the spoiler is what I, what I'm gonna try to point out is that I think you'll hear that, you know, there's, there's not very good compliance at this kiln. There hasn't been good compliance over the years. The, um, the testing process, as Bruce pointed out, is set up so that the, the, the actual emissions that take place between the once every five years compliance tests are probably worse than they are during the compliance tests. And I just want to cover a sort of a small corner of the problem. And that is that even, even if you assume that this, this kiln complies fully with its emission standards all the time, which is wildly optimistic. But even if you assume all that, it, it's not safe. And so the first, um, the first point I'd like to make is the, the federal emission standards that apply to this plant are not based emission standards. EPA doesn't claim that if the kiln, uh, complies with these standards, it will be safe. Nobody has ever determined, um, that to be the case. These are technology-based standards. They're extended to the Clean Air Act, which requires, uh, the kiln to reduce its emissions of certain hazardous air pollutants by the maximum degree that's achievable. And you might think, well, even if they're not health-based standards, the maximum degree of reduction that's achievable sounds pretty good. But even that, uh, is not really the case. Unfortunately, uh, the, the standards that EPA has issued under the Clean Air Act were defective from the time they were issued. Uh, on behalf of Jane, uh, we challenged them in court. EPA admitted that they did not satisfy the Clean Air Act and it took, uh, essentially it took them back to fix them, but it has never fixed them. So you know, the, the, the short of it is these standards don't, they don't even purport to be protective of, of health and they don't meet, uh, even, even the, the tests that they set for themselves. So let me, let me go back to what Jane, uh, suggested and, and sort of talk about the, the background of, of regulating a plant like this that burns hazardous waste. When, when EPA first started, uh, recognizing the, the dangers that, that, that come with burning hazardous waste, the agency did, uh, initially decide that there should be health-based standards. That was back in the eighties. The standards it set were not terribly strong. And when, uh, when EPA sort of revisited the, the issue in the 1990s, it realized that these, these plants are subject to two uh, completely different federal laws. If they're subject to the laws for burning hazardous waste. And that's a statute called the Resource Conservation, uh, and Recovery Act or RICRA. And they're also, because they're burning hazardous waste, that's the, and they're also subject to the Clean Air Act because they're turning that hazardous waste into hazardous air pollution. And so, uh, you know, if this were done right, they would satisfy, they would, you know, be satisfying both statutes, but EPA made a decision to combine, uh, the standards under, under these, rather than having them meet both requirements, they would, it would just meet the requirements under the Clean Air Act. So, you know, more than 30 years ago, well, probably almost 30 years ago, EPA ditched the idea that it was going to set, um, health protective standards. The standards that EPA, uh, has in here apply to a number of different groups of pollutants that the lightweight aggregate kilns emit. So they emit a lot of particulate matter. As Bruce pointed out, that, that goes through the bag house. Uh, but within that particular matter, there are lots of metals. And so they have standards for, for metals. Uh, they have standards for dioxins. And standards for organics. And there are different, there are different ways to measure all of these pollutants. The, the problem is, is that it takes a lot to, to, to exceed these standards because the standards are so weak. And the standards are really the measurement, you know, to see whether the source is in compliance with the standards only happens once every several years. And then, uh, as Bruce pointed out, it's a beauty contest because the plant knows when it's gonna happen and can carefully arrange everything to put its best face on. So I think that's, I guess that's really the, the gist of, of, you know, the regulatory side of this is that don't trust the regulations, uh, to keep you safe from this plant.
Jane, should we take questions now or, uh, wait until the end?
Um, I would take questions for Jim now, just in case he's got, wants to spend time with his family this evening. And if you have any more questions for Bruce as well.
So if anyone would like to ask a question, feel free to unmute yourself.
I have a question. Jim, thank, thank you so much for that, that really, uh, disturbing presentation. Uh, and I'm just wondering, is there any possibility that you see in the new Biden administration, uh, of, of pushing for, um, you know, not only to meet the the feasibility, um, the technology expectations for standards, but also bring health back into the conversation around these issues?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that. So there, there are opportunities to, to do both of those things. First, um, as Bruce mentioned, there's a chance to have a community health assessment. That, you know, it would be in addition to these standards and would enable them to do something, you know, beyond the standards to protect this community based on the particular threats that this plant poses. There's also a chance to get the standards to be stronger. I mean, the standards, um, are, you know, the standards are, are weaker than the law requires. And that means there's some leverage from the law to make them stronger. And you know, there's been a, a court order requiring EPA to fix these standards out there for a long time. And, you know, there is a chance to now go back to the court, talk to the Biden administration and say, you know, here's an opportunity to do something that should have been done a long time ago and strengthen these standards.
Yeah, I, I, let me jump in and say, I am skeptical, um, on that. EPA is under an obligation every eight years to revisit these standards. And I have been working, uh, after I was a senior counsel at the Justice Department for what, 10 years or so, I then was director of Air Enforcement Division for EPA and worked with the standard setters who reside down in North Carolina. And culturally, this is not, you know, coming down from the top politically. And it's across all of the, the hazardous standards, the math standards. They're all, they, they were supposed to be set at the no less stringent than the average of the best performing 12%. And Jim knows, we've done the math together. They keep coming up with performance standards that would clean up the very worst within a particular sector, but nowhere near pushing the sector to get to the performance of the top 12%. I guess they think it's just too expensive to do that or something, but it's been a cultural thing down, uh, in Research Triangle Park for 20 plus, 30 plus years. You know, it's part of the thing is what you can't measure, you don't deal with. And, you know, measuring air toxics is difficult. And so uh, it doesn't show up on the radar a lot.
So I, I have a question and a comment that actually goes well with that. And that is that, um, I did an interview, I'm getting echo from somewhere. I did an interview with Dr. David Carpenter, who's been involved with this, uh, movement, um, you know, from the get-go. And, um, I was talking to him about the, um, the lack of testing by the DEC or anyone else of the, you know, the blood of, uh, the people most directly affected by this. And he said that one of the things that the DEC may be trying to do essentially is wait this out. In other words, um, because, uh, the PFAS is not getting to these people through the water system, but through the air that their bodies will only hold it for a certain amount of time and it will do damage that's long lasting. But the trace elements of it will disappear, uh, in relatively short order. So, uh, my question is, I no longer trust any of the regulatory bodies that are out there for testing, for enforcement, for anything like that. And we need to be more proactive about testing people who are directly effective, uh, affected in a timely manner. How do we go about doing that, uh, especially with the lack of affordability of some of these testing protocols?
I don't think I can answer that one. I will defer to Jane, I think, on testing. Jane, I think you're muted.
Sorry. Yeah, I was gonna say, I think, I think that that's probably in my, my breadbasket and, um, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak at the end, uh, but it is very expensive, the kind of testing that you're looking at doing. There are other tests that can be done, uh, of people and of the environment that are less expensive. And so, Dr. Carmen has joined us and I really wanted Neil to talk about the first, say from 1970 to 1990, about why, why are we doing this in the first place? What, why are we burning hazardous waste in these kilns? At all? Like, how did this whole practice get started? Cause I think it'll be very illuminating for your community to hear how you got here and why you're here. And then I'm towards the end, David, I'll be happy to answer that question.
Okay, uh, I'm Neil Carmen. I'm here in Dawson, Texas, and I worked for a state regulatory agency from 1980 to 1992. Before that, I was teaching in a university in the biological sciences with a lot of chemistry and biochemistry and so forth, genetics. And so I was very concerned about pollution from working at the Great Lakes Research Center at the University of Michigan in the late sixties and finding a hell of a lot of pollution in the Great Lakes, a lot of dead, uh, fish, dead plankton. It was, it was shocking experience. So anyway, I went to work for the state and I was inspecting industrial facilities, including incinerators, including Portland cement kilns, refineries, petrochemical plants. And it was shocking to see the worker exposures and the community exposures. And, um, I was told basically, don't make any waves, Neil, okay? But, um, you know, I, I knew what benzene was and I knew acids, hydrochloric acid, sulfuric acid. And I was becoming very concerned about these things called dioxins. Okay. Because I was also in charge of a stack testing program for the state in all of West Texas. And at the seminars we had, they were talking about these dioxins. Okay. These highly chlorinated chemicals. So, um, you know, um, anyway, there was no incineration, uh, that I was aware of in Texas and the cement kilns and Portland cement kilns. In the seventies or the eighties, um, they had some stack monitoring systems, but you know, nothing for dioxins or anything like that. Just for, you know, particulate matter, for nitrogen oxides, carbon monoxide. But, you know, I didn't hear of any, any cement kilns or these lightweight aggregate kilns, okay, burning waste. The only ones that were burning hazardous waste, uh, in Texas, were the commercial incinerators down on the Gulf Coast. And then because I was going to, you know, you know, quarterly seminars in Austin and with EPA, I began to hear horror stories about the dioxins and the problems with the commercial waste incinerators in Houston and in Port Arthur. And they would also, the EPA people that did come would occasionally mention that, oh, there's a few other of these commercial waste incinerators around the country, but not a whole lot of them. But in the 1980s, there was a huge shift at EPA to push incineration in cement kilns and lightweight aggregate kilns. And I heard Bruce talking a little bit about the MAC standards. But these incinerators were one thing, and they had their own problems. And that's one thing I learned through my 12 years at the state agency is every single incinerator, including brand new ones, dual chambered, state of the art, they had problems meeting their afterburner temperatures, 2021, 2200 degrees, resonance times, and they would call up and say, hey, Neil, we need to talk about the problems we're having because we're, we're not meeting the special conditions of the permit. And I said, well, that's a problem because there's people living near you and they're calling and complaining. So I was immediately involved from the early 80s on enforcement cases against a whole, almost all the incinerators in West Texas. They all, some of these were in industrial waste burnout incinerators. They were all having problems, okay? And so we were involved in enforcement, trying to get them to comply. And the people in the neighborhoods were complaining about this smoke, this smells, and it, it was bad stuff. So anyway, the, the cement kilns wanted to get permits because the EPA wanted to find a way to get rid of a lot more hazardous waste, commercial hazardous waste. I guess maybe the economy was expanding more chemical, petrochemical plants, refineries and industrial facilities with hazardous waste. So EPA wanted to help industry find a way to get rid of it. And so there was huge opposition to these commercial hazardous waste incinerators. And there was a few onsite hazardous waste incinerators in Texas at Dow Chemical and DuPont. And, you know, those weren't quite as bad because they were just burning some of their own dedicated waste streams. But these commercial operations are really horrific in my view because they're burning, you know, pages and pages of these waste codes. And, and it's just really, I think, a great concern because then, you know, you, you want to see, well, what kind of controls do they have? Well, at first, the incinerator, the cement kilns and the lightweight aggregate kilns didn't want to put on a whole lot of extra controls because after all, they said, hey, we can burn up to 3,000 degrees in the Portland cement kilns. But let me say this, I was aware of the problems in these gigantic Portland cement kilns because the, the southwestern Portland cement kiln that I went to every year, nobody complained about it, but it had two kilns. And they had a shotgun mounted on a turret at the, at the low end, the hot end of the kiln. And, and I would go out there every year and, and to go to the control room where they, you know, were monitoring the kiln temperatures and, and the clinker, all of that. So I would chat with the engineers, what the hell are you doing with hundreds of shotgun shell casings on the floor? Dangerous to walk in here. Well, Neil, we have a problem in the kiln. It starts clogging up. We start getting a solid ring formation. And they said, hey, look in here, can you see the solid ring forming? They set the shotgun turret up there, opened up the little opening and bang, bang, boom, boom, you know? And so I saw that, you know, every year for 12 years. And because they said, well, we, we've got to allow the material coming down the kiln to, you know, the clinker to get through the solid ring formation. So they had to blast it open with, this was a 10 gauge shotgun. And then I saw them and just shook my head and, you know, that's their, their process control, their shotgun. There's nothing in the permit, by the way, about using a shotgun to blast into the solid ring formation because it's, it's, you know, very heavy duty material coming down that kiln. And it's very hot. But anyway, so, you know, I had some experiences like that with the cement kilns. I heard some other stories around the country that these kilns that definitely had problems, kiln meltdowns, if the kiln temperature gets out of control and the kiln can sag and basically the kiln is then destroyed. And I, I heard some of these stories from the southwestern Portland cement people because the engineers talked to me, and of course, I never wrote reports up about that. That wasn't, you know, that kind of thing wasn't in their permits. Their permits were about the stack emissions, okay? Carbon monoxide, nitrogen oxide. So anyway, in a nutshell, I left the agency in 1992 and was becoming aware of the cement kilns getting, seeking permits, recr apartment B permits under the Resource Conservation Recovery Act to burn all these commercial hazardous wastes. And so I joined up at some point with Jane and a lot of people beyond Sierra Club to try to legally fight and challenge these permits. Because I knew that these, that these pseudo incinerators has, you know, what the cement kilns were and lightweight aggregate kilns, that, that this was, this was not going to be acceptable in terms of public health, in terms of the stack emissions. And, and I will say too, that I saw a lot of problems when I was either doing stack emissions testing and the plants would say, Neil, we just had an upset. You have to stop your testing because we don't want you to count that. We've had a boot, you know, we've had a spike, you know? Or I would be out there watching a contractor at, at a, you know, a gas plant or refinery, chemical plant, all kinds of facilities. I was doing this almost every month and they encountered the problems. And, and so the, the thing is, you know, these facilities, even incinerators, Portland cement kilns, they have upset conditions. And then things are even worse than so-called routine conditions. So in the stack data, you know, they didn't want to report it because they could claim, well, we've had an upset. So I was aware that all of these facilities, whether they're these commercial hazardous waste incinerators or the Portland cement kilns or the lightweight aggregate kilns, they had problems, okay? The temperatures would not always get up there or they would be low on oxygen in which you're not going to have adequate, whatever that is, combustion of these chlorinated chemicals. And so I was working with a lot of folks to try to stop the, the recr apartment B permits of cement kilns. Like here near Austin, there was one. And we, it was Lafarge. And I knew people up in Alpena, Michigan, who were fighting Lafarge and telling horror stories up there about the deformed fish in Lake Huron, okay? And that was common around the, the area of Alpena, Michigan. And Lafarge had its largest cement, Portland cement manufacturing complex in North America, I believe, right there at Alpena. And, and some of those folks I became friends with. So we were all trading, you know, horror stories about what's going on. And so we stopped a number of the cement kilns in Texas from getting their permits. One thing we did in Texas is we got the state legislature to pass a bill that if you, that you had to be at least a half a mile away from any residents if you didn't have a recr apartment B permit to burn hazardous waste. So that, that killed Lafarge, south of Austin and a few others. But, you know, so we were fighting these all over the country. And, you know, Arkansas, Oklahoma, Ohio, Michigan, California, New York, Georgia, I did some traveling. And, you know, because I was well aware of the kinds of problems that these incinerators had. And I thought that, you know, cement kilns, they're not designed or built to be commercial hazardous waste incinerators, okay? They're not dual chambered and, you know, they, they tell a lot of lies about how they operate. And so anyway, I, I was very skeptical because of my regulatory experience. And then, you know, coming to work with Sierra Club in 1992 and interacting with people all over the country, okay? And I didn't hear anything good about these lightweight aggregate kilns in North Carolina, where we worked with Joanne Almond, who is a county commissioner there to stop. I think it was Norlite, might, might have been Norlite in, in North Carolina. But of course, there weren't as many of the lightweight aggregate kilns, but a lot of Portland cement kilns. So anyway, in a nutshell, there's really nothing I can say positive about burning waste in a Portland cement kiln or in a lightweight aggregate kiln. They should not be doing it. And it was appalling. We had meetings with EPA in DC on several occasions about these incineration activities. And, you know, it, it was not, EPA was not as receptive. This was during the Clinton Gore administration and, and, you know, 93, a tail end of Bush quail. But anyway, so it was very disappointing, but not too shocking to me as a former state regulator. I will say this, I'm a whistleblower. And in 1989, I went public over a cover up of major violations at a large petrochemical plant after I was taken off of the case. And in a matter of four months, I flipped the cover up into the largest air pollution lawsuit that Texas Attorney General's Office has ever handled to this day because that plant was emitting 250 tons of styrene. It was a synthetic rubber plant operated by General Tire and Rubber out of Akron, Ohio. And the men in the plant told me not to go out at night anymore, that my life was in danger. And so after we won the case and forced them to put on pollution controls, a thermal oxidizer to burn up most of the 250 tons of styrene, I quietly left the agency. But that, that plant was right next to a community of color, poor blacks, poor Hispanics, a few poor whites. And it was 10,000 people of color on the south side of Odessa. And they finally put in the thermal oxidizer. So I've seen all these problems with the regulatory agencies, with these plants. So I, the only good incinerator is one that's not operating anymore, okay? And lightweight aggregate kilns, Portland cement kilns, they shouldn't be burning any hazardous waste because you're going to have metals coming out to stack. You're going to have dioxins, dibenzo furans and all kinds of other stuff that they, you know, may not even be sampling for. So, you know, they could be down in the parts per trillion or even lower range. But I know, I'll just say, in the regulatory agency at all of our seminars, the people involved in the stack testing or watching the contractors were very concerned about breathing any kind of dioxins, dibenzo furans up on those stacks because we knew what the hell was coming out of the smoke stacks. It was bad news. There were no monitoring systems on those stacks to, to give you any kind of an eyeball of how much dioxin, dibenzo furans, PCBs were, were, were coming out. And so, but from, from the, the small amount of testing in Texas and around the country, there was no, not a shadow of a doubt that you had all these chlorinated chemicals coming out unburned. So anyway, and, and I did go to a couple of the commercial hazardous waste incinerators in Texas, went, met with them and basically wanted to know if they were complying. This is when I was with Sierra Club, they did give us tours. But, you know, basically, we communicated through Sierra Club that we really didn't like incineration and hazardous waste incineration is really even worse because you're burning, so you're burning hundreds and hundreds, thousands of different chemicals. If you could go in there and look at the chemistry of all these industrial wastes. I mean, you, you'd turn a couple of analytical chemists loose for a lifetime trying to identify every chemical in there because it's, it's just hu- huge. So any, so what kinds of questions do people have?
Yeah, yeah. Hi, Neil. You said the only good incinerator is a closed incinerator. Where, where are these chemicals going to go? If they don't go to a landfill, if they don't go to an incinerator, what are we going to do with them?
Well, there's a lot of things that can be done. For example, there are ways to dechlorinate benzene compounds, whether it be hexafluorobenzene. I worked with that stuff in laboratories and they all had skull and crossbones warning labels on it. But that you can dechlorinate a benzene ring or a phenolic ring with, with using catalysts. You don't have to heat it up, you don't have to try to burn it. So you can use catalysts and room temperature materials to, to basically break down that material so that it's no longer classified as a hazardous waste, okay? So that's, you know, we, Jane and myself and others have been working to, to get the, the Department of Defense and EPA to recognize these dechlorination technologies. And so you don't have to incinerate. Incinerate is, it's, it's insanity is what it is, okay? So I've, I've never seen an incinerator that could comply or lightweight aggregate kiln. They're all violating the law in, in many ways. So anyway, there's ways to safely get rid of these wastes.
Is this dechlor process expensive? Is that why it's not done?
Um, you know, I must admit, Dave, that I'm, I'm not much versed on the costs. But I, I think that, you know, it's not cheap to ship stuff off to incinerators or Portland cement kiln. The kiln, the cement kilns and the lightweight kilns are probably a lot cheaper because they see it has a fuel that they can use, which is outrageous. And, and so, you know, they should be taxed, okay, by, by the state, by the state of New York and every state. They should put a tax on this stuff and then make, make these people come up with, you know, ways that are acceptable through technologies to dispose of the waste. So here in Texas, for example, we pushed legislation and it was actually, some of it was voluntary for the 2,000 industrial plants in Texas to come up with 50% reduction strategies in their hazardous waste generation. And that happened in the early 90s. And so, you know, and I've been in a lot of plants, meeting with people and, and they do, you know, work on strategies to try to generate less hazardous waste, okay? And rather than sending it to incinerators or lightweight kilns or a landfill. So there's progress that's been made, but it's still, you know, if they're sending it to incinerators or lightweight kilns, that's not, not kosher, okay?
Thanks. Um, yeah, and just, just to jump in there on, on this, we actually spent a great deal of time over the last 25 years looking for alternatives to incineration. And we worked with the National Academy of Sciences and the Department of Defense. And new technologies, forward advanced technologies have been developed. And we just recently finished a three-year-long project to identify alternatives to incineration and open burning of the conventional munitions stockpile. And we're in the process of now working with DOD to, to try to end the open burning of hazardous waste by the Department of Defense. So, and some of the technologies that were reviewed by the National Academy of Sciences are applicable to this particular problem as well. And I can talk a little bit more about that when I take the floor after questions for Neil are over.
Judith has a question.
Thanks, Alexis. Hi, everyone. I'm Judith Ink, formerly with EPA. And nice to see you, Bruce, and thank you, Neil. And Jim. What do you think of? I have three questions, but let's go in order of alternatives to incineration. What do you think of supercritical water oxidation? And if you like it, I'd urge you to look at the website of an outfit called 374 Water, which is a group which is a group of Duke University professors funded by the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, who are trying to commercialize and scale up this alternative to incineration. Neil, do you put that in the category of dechlorination, dechlorinating chemicals? What, what's your take on that technology?
Um, I have seen some evidence supporting that supercritical uh, technology. Um, and I, I think that with anything, you want to make sure that you are carefully monitoring whatever, you know, end product they have. And, and, and that's the bottom line. You've got to make sure that the stuff is being adequately destroyed. And I don't think it's that difficult. Um, so you know, these things should be deployed around the country. I, I think that there is promise for these technologies, okay? So we don't burn um, the hazardous waste anymore. But um, you know, the, these kinds of technologies I think are, are promising. But I would like to see, you know, I'd like to see that all of the, I haven't looked at the test data for a while, but I'd like to see, you know, that they're operated uh, safely over time. Because this is the thing, you, you know, what if the thing, the equipment begins to degrade? And then maybe it's not working as well as when it was first designed and built and operated. So you can get it to some maintenance problems, okay?
Yeah, well, that, that's with everything. But I think what's encouraging here is if it's not working as designed, you're not having toxins emitted into the atmosphere. You, you just test the material. Um, and I appreciate Rebecca Martin from Riverkeeper put in the chat room the website for 374 Water. I'm not in, you know, I'm not pitching a particular company. I just find that it looks like they're, they're almost ready to go and to scale.
Um, so, so, okay, but listen, supercritical water oxidation is a mature technology. It's actually been used now for two decades. So the problem with 357 is that Bill of Melinda Gates thought it was something new. And you have to know what the liner is made out of. Because one of the problems with supercritical water is if you use a stainless steel liner, when you heat it, you get hexavalent chromium emissions. And the National Academy of Sciences has spent years reviewing supercritical water. They were part of the down selection for the Chemical Demilitarization Program. Supercritical water oxidation is the most probed and reviewed and expensive technology that we have ever developed for the destruction of hazardous waste. I bet we have spent over a billion dollars of it. And the general atomics um, version of supercritical water is extraordinarily mature. Um, we have two giant supercritical water oxidation units sitting at Bluegrass. But one of the problems was that one of the, um, during the shakedown for it to destroy hydraulics there for chemical weapons, one of the pumps exploded. Not part of the technology, just one of the pumps that was supposed to be pumping the hydraulics. Well, it's very interesting to know that all of a sudden, after all this money, time and number of NAS reviews, all of a sudden they're going to shutter those plants. And that has a great deal to do with the fact that Mike Pence's best friend is the head of Heritage, which owns like five of the commercial hazardous waste incinerators in the country. So it's not that we don't have alternative technologies that actually work amazingly well and are very monitorable. It's that you have this existing industrial infrastructure that's already built out. And they don't want an alternative. They don't want a competing technology. They want to be able to keep their, their incinerators and their lightweight aggregate kilns and their cement kilns that are burning hazardous waste. They want those to stay online. So it's very similar to the problem with coal-fired power plants, right? Where you're trying to get windmills and renewables in. So maybe that's the fight for the next decade. But you know, 37, 374, that's like, that's at bench scale. It's like we're trying to reinvent something that we already invented. I don't, I never understood, like, we have five different squo vendors. And it's, it's like, no, we already have a mature technology that uses a titanium liner, right? And um, there's squo technologies operating in Russia, North Korea, South America, Africa, India, in Europe. The only place we don't have a supercritical water oxidation currently operating is in the United States. And that's because the incinerator industry is so politically powerful. So it's not, it's not a scientific problem, it's a political problem.
Okay, so, thank you. So two other questions. One is, I was interested in what Ed Sokol, a neighbor of Norlite, has raised a few times with us and tonight, the idea of testing uh, the end product for contaminants. What would be the um, legal authority to require that to be tested before it leaves the plant site? Does Rickra provide that authority and, but is?
I don't think so. I think that those products from lightweight aggregate kilns and cement kilns, I think they're, they're, I think they Bevel uh, amendment decades ago exempted those products from any kind of uh, regulation in terms of having dioxins or chromium six or lead or whatever. But yeah, they're, they're going to contain stuff. But uh, I think they've gotten exemptions a long time ago. I can't remember, this was in the late eighties or the early nineties. But, but it, it's uh, there's been loopholes built in to allow uh, these products to escape, you know, any kind of scrutiny of what might be in them, okay? But you know, there's going to be a heck, chromium six, going to be lead, uh, whatever, whatever is being burned in that kiln. Um, some of the metals are going to, you know, definitely uh, kind of compartmentalize and preferentially go into the solid phase and go into the product. So, you know, I would expect to be some dioxins as well.
Is Jim still with us?
I know. I, I think he, I think Jim left.
He went to dinner. Yeah, I'm going to go soon. Um, no, I'm, I'm puzzled by that answer that uh, it's, it's not the base product that might be Bevel protected. But you're now adding materials.
Right from.
And if those materials exceed Rickra has waste numbers, why wouldn't it be a hazardous waste?
Well, I thought that's what was exempted, okay?
What?
Those, that, that, those products, whether it's a, uh, you know, like the clinker from a Southwest Portland cement plant or uh, even the uh, the stuff coming out of a lightweight aggregate kiln. That I've never seen any kind of a permit uh, for a lightweight kiln or a Portland cement kiln where there was any testing of the end product. Okay?
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's something for further research and maybe we can ask Jim Q. And my, my final question, then I'll be quiet, is you, they're burning just a wide variety of industrial solvents, different liquid hazardous waste. There's a, a chemist on site who's the mixologist to make sure it doesn't blow up. Um, if we were to get um, continuous emission monitoring required, what, what would you test for, given that it's hundreds of difference of types of chemicals that are burned at Norlite? If you were to get SEMS, what would you ask for?
Um, there are uh, sampling systems which will collect uh, like dioxins and those kinds of chlorinated chemicals. And then they uh, the sampling devices run for a while and then you have to take them off and put new ones on and go and test what's in there, okay? Uh, but there is no kind of an actual real-time continuous emission monitoring system that's going to tell you right now, you've got dioxins. Now, I mean, not that I'm aware of.
Right.
Because you, you're looking for, you know, less than part per trillion. You're, you're looking for very, very trace amounts of these highly toxic chemicals. So uh, those samples have to be collected and then taken to special laboratories where the people wear moon suits because you don't want anything on your skin or your clothing to potentially contaminate uh, the samples that have been collected, so.
But, but real time, you'll be monitoring the, the levels of chlorine in the fuel and the temperatures uh, stacked up just to make sure they're not too high so that the conditions for creating dioxins are minimized, shall we say.
Yeah, and the chlorine is an issue because the uh, the chlorinated chemicals, the, the chlorine atoms will, you know, break off of these hydrocarbon chains or rings, carbon rings, aromatic rings. And then um, you know, you've got chlorine that can come out, has either Cl2 chlorine or has hydrogen chloride gas. So, you know, now those are a concern because they indicate, you know, what kind of potentially chlorinated uh, byproducts, like the, the dioxins and dibenzophurans might be coming out the stack. So they're supposed to have, you know, uh, chlorine HCl scrubbers. But a lot of times I've seen these um, facilities have problems where you'd be shocked if you looked at the amounts that the permits allow in pounds per hour of chlorine and HCl coming out the stacks. And that, that's a pound per hour basis. So if they have a five or a 10-minute spike and then it drops down, the pounds per hour data might say they're in compliance when they've had this horrible speed limit violation, you know, way above the, like if it's 50 miles an hour and they spiked up to 100, 200, but just for a short period of time where the scrubber uh, wasn't operating optimally, okay? So I don't really like pounds per hour limits. I think they're very biased towards allowing spikes and, and large amounts, uh, larger amounts of pollution than are safe. So if you look, every incinerator permit I've ever seen allowed, I thought way too much HCl and chlorine. And, and those are uh, kind of indicators of, you know, uh, the potential for these chlorinated dioxins and dibenzophurans, PCBs. So um, anyway, but chlorine is a good surrogate to indicate that, yeah, you're burning a lot of chlorinated chemicals. So it's, it's a huge concern.
Yeah, I'd be looking at the, the chlorine levels before the scrubber.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, actually, they, they had to get rid of their wet scrubber, uh, Bruce and Neil, because they had too much chlorine going into the Mohawk River. Huge amounts of chlorine coming out.
If there's that much chlorine in the feedstocks, then you start to worry about the dioxin. That's where I'm going with this.
Yeah, I know.
Yep.
They also have multi-metal monitors now for metals that are stack monitors.
Now, in looking, in looking on Google Earth, uh, I don't know, a week or two weeks ago at that Norlite there in Cohoes, New York, uh, it was very obvious to me that there's a tremendous amount of rust and corrosion damage. I had been around sources, fertilizer plant in West Texas, I shut it down after 10 years. It, it, it was a making potassium sulfate. But um, its byproduct was HCl. And so all the businesses for a quarter mile around complained about it. And we told the businesses to put out copper pennies. We put out copper because it would, it would turn a green overnight from the reaction of HCl with the copper. And um, and it was very easy in our lab to identify the copper chlorine crystals in a microscope and X-ray analysis. So um, you know, I, I, I think this is why it's very dangerous for these uh, kilns uh, like Norlite to be burning chlorinated chemicals. They shouldn't really be, be burning it. It should be, should be stopped, should be limited. Um, but a lot of the stuff they get is chlorinated chemicals because uh, industry makes uh, just, you know, hundreds and hundreds of different chlorinated hydrocarbons. And you know, I worked around in the labs with some of this stuff. And every, every chlorinated chemical I worked with had a skull and crossbow warning label on the bottles.
Um, with respect, we do have more questions and Joe Ritchie has his hand up right now.
Hi, um, I just had a quick question, pretty much for any of the experts on this panel. Um, again, thank you for coming, it means a lot. Um, I live at Saratoga sites, which is actually only 100 feet from the Norlite property line and approximately 500 feet from the, from the stacks. And I guess my first question is, have you ever seen a facility like this, this close to where people are living? Um, you know, sometimes even less than 100 feet, depending on where you are on the property.
I, you know, I have.
Fortunately, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, Bruce, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, I was uh, on occasion to visit a, a electroplating facility that uh, its emissions were hexavalent chromium and the pepper filter was up on the roof and they didn't want to go up there and have to monitor it. And it was a big, this was out in California. And it wound up, me and the head of enforcement for California went and visited the place. And we went up on the roof and it was right next to the grammar school. The Catholic Grammar School, literally fenced, flying the fence line. And it was hexavalent chromium.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I investigated some facilities when I worked for the state air pollution control agency from the eighties and early nineties. And they were right in communities uh, in West Texas. And uh, and they were having problems with their um, afterburners um, not reaching proper temperatures. And then they would smoke and uh, the smell in the community was horrible, okay? I mean, you know, we didn't have any authority to do criminal, but uh, those people should either shut the incinerators down or be arrested. But I mean, that's just not the way the system works, okay? We'd issue a violation and say you, you've got to get your, uh, your temperatures up, okay? What's going on? And um, so anyway, yes, I, I saw these kinds of, of facilities right in neighborhoods and.
Yeah, and on one occasion when I was uh, Air Enforcement Director at EPA where it was a styrene facility in a small town in North Carolina and it was right in the middle of the neighborhood. And they were having upsets on a regular basis where the fire department had to come to clear the people out. And that was the only time we ever threatened to use uh, our emergency authority to shut down a place. And once we threatened to do that, uh, the company voluntarily agreed to shut down and move out of the, the neighborhood.
Right, and I guess that brings me to my next point, and thank you guys for your answers. Um, clearly a facility like Norlite, um, many of, have you alluded, you know, it's pretty much unenforceable to an extent. Um, I mean, we have a, a state agency that, you know, lack for better words, you know, allows them to do what they're doing. Um, I, I go out every single day to my car and there's just a fine, there's a fine layer of dust on my car every single day from their, from their mining facilities and from their stacks, which by their permit, actually they're not, you're not supposed to see that level. Um, and if I'm out there for a few days, I mean, it looks like a dust storm hit, hit the cars. Um, you know, what does the city of Cohoes have an incentive to keep a facility like this open knowingly that their people are there breathing in this stuff? You know, and you know, I've lived there for 20 years and I, I'm just really curious to see what my lungs look like, you know? Um, i- it's very hard and there's people are living there and the smell is unbearable. Here and there we'll get dust storms. One just happened two weeks ago, driving down the road. And the only spot that had the dust was where Norlite was and Saratoga sites was. I mean, I could see that a half mile down the road. Um, but yet we have a state agency that's saying it's okay for these guys to do what they're doing while we have people here breathing in that stuff. And clearly from what you guys have been saying, these facilities shouldn't even be operating within the parameters of, of a city limit at, at the, at the least.
Right, right. And you are a biological monitor of Norlite. And everybody living around the plant is a living monitor. And that's the most important thing. And uh, if people are being exposed at all, I mean, the city council, the state of New York, the DC, they should be taking action because it's, it's really, in my view, criminal to be exposing anybody. Uh, you know, whether they're healthy adults or children or pregnant women or elderly people, it's really criminal for people to be exposed in this day and age to all this, this, this toxicity, okay? So you are a, a biological monitor. And you know, you can, you can do all the air testing you want, but you know, that's the bottom line. What's getting into your lungs, how much of it's getting into the bloodstream? And there's no doubt that this pollution, you know, if it's in the lungs, it's going into the bloodstream. So I, I, I find it very um, you know, disconcerting that you're talking about the dust on your car on a daily basis. So I mean, um, people need to organize, they need to talk to the city council more and they need to come, they need to make an organized effort to complain on a daily basis, on the weekends. I mean, I will say this, I, I, I chased polluters seven days a week, okay? When I was on complaint call one week a month, I went out on Saturday nights at midnight to major petrochemical plants. I, I went to. nights at midnight to major petrochemical plants. I, I went to refineries, I went to incinerators, and I found people breaking the law. But I found them breaking the law Monday through Friday. Okay. All the time. But I chased pollution constantly. And I was always amazed at how much, you know, noncompliance there was. But it, it was a, it was a constant battle. Okay. And we could not really shut these things down. Okay. I did see two, two facilities I was after get their permits revoked. And the people in Austin said, Neil, I've been here 15 years. I've never seen a permit revoked. So there, there are ways to revoke permits. Okay. And, and so the permit should be revoked for Norlite to burn any more hazardous waste.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna head off for dinner, folks. Thank you for the opportunity. But I just want to underscore the last question slash comment. That's where the community health assessment comes in, is that's what provides the information that then your county council or the state or EPA can do something more. So thank you, folks.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Bye bye.
Thanks, Bruce.
Thank you.
And we still need to hear from Jane Williams, who is the chair of Sierra Club's National Clean Air Team. And she's going to tell us about waste incineration and kilns and challenges for public health protections.
Okay, so I think it was Jennifer, who I saw has a Christmas tree in her house. I bet that there's a number of people here watching have Christmas trees. And right now, because of the holiday season, you got your Christmas tree and you have the lights on, right? Jennifer, do you have the lights on your Christmas tree? So Jennifer, what, what happens when you, one of the kids runs over there and pulls the, the cord out of the, the wall?
Can you guys give me one minute? My daughter's leaving. There's too much background noise. Give me one minute. Give me one, one second. I'll answer that.
So, so I'll let her off the hook. When, when you pull the plug on the lights, the lights go off. Okay. They don't operate anymore. And I'm trying to use that as an analog, because that's what's happening at Norlite. So the way that the standards, the MAC standards are pulled together, these are the, these are the federal standards that apply to the facility. Okay. It basically says, okay, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna feed a bunch of waste into this, this industrial facility. And we know that air pollution is going to come out the back end. Well, prior to the Clean Air Act, that was allowed. I mean, we've got facilities all over this country that could emit as much pollution into the air as they wanted to. Absolutely with impunity. It was only when the Clean Air Act came in, and then when the 1990 amendments came in. So Jim, Mr. Pugh and I have worked virtually since the beginning of his career in the mid 90s to force EPA to promulgate these standards. And there's over 200 different source categories that have standards promulgated. And it's, it's to, to boil all down into a nutshell, any industrial polluter can make dramatic reductions in the amount of pollution that they are emitting into the air. And they, and they do that by adding on different black boxes. So think about, there's one black box that gets the large particulates out. That's like the Venturi scrubber. Then there's the acid gases. And there's another black box that gets the acid gases out. And then there's things like dioxins and furans and other kind of weird stuff like, you know, mercury and semi volatile metals. And there's a, a black box that gets that out. So think of, think of air pollution control, like a series of black boxes, right? And do these boxes work? Well, each, each one of these black boxes has a different sort of efficiency. You know, the Venturi scrubbers are anywhere from 80 to 95% efficient. The scrubbers, depending on what kind you have, the kind that Norlite has now, the dry scrubber is the high end. It's high end scrubber. It's supposed to get, you know, 99.99 of all kinds of acid gases out and not have water effluent. The fabric filters, there's, there's basically the good, the bad, and the ugly fabric filters. There's old style fabric filters. Think of like a burlap bag, bag hanging there, right? New style fabric filters that are made out of Teflon. They're very resistant to heat. They're very high end. And a high efficiency baghouse can reduce particulate emissions by 99%. Amazing pieces of equipment. Okay. So if you were to go and talk to some of the best air pollution control engineers in the country, they would tell you that a facility like Norlite could reduce its emissions of acid gases and particulate and things like dioxins and things like mercury to probably, you know, anywhere from 95% to 99% efficiency. And modern, you know, facilities that are super modern, that burn hazardous waste, like the new El Dorado kiln, hazardous waste incinerator in Arkansas is designed to meet the most stringent metal standards, you know, that we have. But these systems, they're highly engineered. They're like a brand new Tesla car that will drive itself. I mean, they are modern miracles of industrial design. But if you walk over and you pull the plug on them, they don't work. They're just like a Christmas tree. If you unplug the lights, the lights go out. And what happens at Norlite, and I've looked at the compliance history at this facility now for like 20 years, they pull the plug on the air pollution control devices. They either operate them out of spec, or they disconnect them, or they mismanage them. And these black boxes, they only work if they are in continuous compliance and are maintained and operated to their standard operating procedures. And I had an interview with a guy who is a sort of an insider in the hazardous waste incineration industry this week. Because I was asking him, why do you think this facility is being run so poorly? And his answer to me was very interesting. He says they're Spanish. It's a Spanish company. And in Spain, they don't have this kind of superstructure, this regulatory superstructure. They are used to not having to comply with the law. And I thought that was a very interesting response from someone, right? That they come from a different social infrastructure that does not have this sort of culture of compliance. And I think that that really is borne out here when you look at the compliance history of the facility. They are flaunting the meager laws that we have in place that are supposed to be protecting the communities that are living next to the facility. And I don't think that there's any reason to hope that that's going to change, because that's more of a culture. It's not about that they don't have equipment. It's not about that they don't have the law. It's just that they are refusing to comply with it. So I wanted to, to drive that point home to you that, that this facility has been a problem all along. It started in 1953. It was one of the first facilities to burn hazardous waste in the country. It started burning hazardous waste in the late 70s. There is a big problem that Neil didn't talk about. And that was that during one of the Bush administrations, the Department of Energy had a bunch of waste it wanted to get rid of. And it was mixed waste. It was hazardous waste tainted with radioactivity. And they had had this waste stored for a long time, many decades, the Department, Department of Energy did. And they saw their opportunity during the first Bush administration to burn it. And they sent it to cement kilns across the country and burned it. And Norlite was one of those kilns. And when I saw the FOIA requests that we got back from the Department of Defense, and I saw that Norlite had taken a bunch of this ATRF waste, I, I recognized that name. At the time, I'm like, wait, Cohoes, New York. Hang on. And I went back to my archives. And I looked through the list of kilns that took that hazardous and radioactive waste. And that facility was on it. So this, this facility has, has been very problematic, really from the beginning. And it's very unfortunate that Joe Ritchie is a biological monitor. And so are the other people that live in Saratoga Springs. Like you literally are like a tree with rings. And your body will tell the tale of what kinds of emissions that facility has had. And so I want to get back to David Pavlov's question. And that is that I worked at a, not a similar facility, but an industrial facility in South Central Los Angeles. I do a lot of work in South Central LA and East LA because they're very similar communities here. They're mostly low income communities of color and people of color. And it is lots of industrial infrastructure, a lot of industrial infrastructure. So one of the things we did, we have four foundries in one square mile in this town in South Central LA. And it had a number of children and teachers at this one school that were, that were dying. They had cancer and they were dying. And so we tried to figure out what's going on here. One of the first things that we did is we took hair samples. Because we figured out that it's like 50 bucks to run your hair. And it's very easy to go and just cut your hair. You don't have to, you know, take blood. You don't have to, you know, do anything fancy. You just, just take hair. And we did hair from people that were older and people that were younger. We had a two year old girl, and we had a 78 year old woman. And we took like 20 hair samples of people living in this community. And when those hair samples came back, you could see that everybody was polluted with, with metals. And one of the, the signature metals that they had in their hair was gadolinium, which is a rare earth metal. It's an extremely rare metal. And when I asked our experts, well, why would these people have gadolinium in their hair? They said, hey, it's because you have foundries there. And they're basically doing aerospace manufacturing, because these metals are only used in aerospace manufacturing. And of course, when we went back and looked at the foundries, that actually bore at, bore itself out. That turned out to be absolutely true. Well, we sent all these samples around to our regulatory agencies, and we could get no one to pay any attention to them. Okay. So then we hired an expert to go and look in attic dust. And he went into some of the same people that we had taken their hair from. He went in and with a standard operating procedure, he vacuumed the dust out of their attic. And when that stuff came back, is laced with metals, including the rare earth metals. And it was only then that we were able to get the regulatory agencies to put a multi, multi metal monitor, one of the first actually fielded in the country at the schoolyard. Okay. So, and then it showed massive emissions of lead and hexavalent chromium and nickel. And what ensued was a many, many, many year process to control these facilities, to have them put, take all their grinding operation indoors, put in engineer controls, put on fancy baghouses and have filters and all different kinds of activities. So one of the first things that you guys can do is do metal analysis. Because over the history, the lifetime of this facility, it will have emitted a lot of metals. And when you look at how many times, how many thousands of hours, millions of hours, their baghouse wasn't working, that just means it's the baghouse that collects the metals. Okay. The Venturi scrubber is collecting the metals. So all of these metals are still in your community because the stack is so low. Your stack is only, you know, like 100, I think it's 130, it's between 100 and 130 feet tall. So you're not, you're not getting giant lofting, you know, for up into the sky. The metals are being deposited, you know, really right there in your community. So I sent the standard operating procedures on what we did here in California with these facilities. And I can send them again if you need them. And it's actually extremely inexpensive to do the, the hair testing. And anybody can do it. You know, you just put on some gloves and you cut your hair and you put it in a bag and you send it off to the lab and then you'll get it back. And you can say, oh, my God, look at all this metal in, in our, the hair of our citizens. We have to do something. So I encourage you, and I'm here to help you do any of those things that you, that you want to do. There's obviously very, very more sophisticated and much more extensive testing that can be done. We just did testing of first responders at the ITC fire down in Houston. These first responders were exposed to massive amounts of ATRF during a three day fire at a tank farm. And many of these firefighters actually have chemical burns on them. And, and that's from the hydrogen fluoride emissions, because they threw so much ATRF on the, the fire that it, it transformed, part of it transformed into ATR, into hydrogen fluoride. And so we worked with a toxic tort firm there to get this testing done. We actually flew some of the firefighters to California, where they have two labs, not just one, but two labs that have clean rooms. And they actually draw the blood inside the clean room so that there's no potential contamination of the sample from it being shipped or anything like that. So there's a lot of things that can be done on the fluorinated side with biomonitoring. But it is very expensive and it has to be done very carefully with very rigorous standard operating procedures, if it's ever going to be admissible as any kind of evidence. I, I would not think that a facility like this would operate for this long in the state of New York. I, I admit to, you know, with Neil, I've worked on these facilities now for three decades. I, I have seen what a lack of compliance looks, looks like in, in states, you know, like Nebraska, Arkansas, Georgia. My own facility that I worked on here in California burned four times the amount of waste that it was permitted to burn for three years. And the state of California would not take enforcement action against the facility. We finally had to work with US EPA who took enforcement action. So I'm very, very familiar with the fact that states don't like to take enforcement. They see their role as one as waste managers, not as protectors of human health. But I have to admit that I am a bit shocked to see how much of a lapdog your regulatory agencies have been on this facility specifically. They are not watchdogs. They are lapdogs. And, and my own personal view is that you cannot restrict what this facility will burn. If it will burn ATRF and it will burn nuclear waste, it will burn anything. And you will not know that it's burning that and you will not be able to stop it. So my personal opinion is that this facility has been a danger to this community for a long time. And it will remain a danger until we stop it from burning hazardous waste at all. So we only have like six minutes left. But I just want to let you know that Neil and I and Jim and Bruce Buckhite, we have all worked together on this issue now for decades. And we are always here to help communities. I often take calls late at night, or relatively late for me now, from Mr. Ritchie. And I encourage him to call me whenever he feels like he needs to. And I know Neil, Neil is a champion of community efforts to, to help communities. He's, he's helped communities all across the United States on so many, just numerous issues, you know, kilns burning hazardous waste, power plants, refineries. And so I just wanted to say, before we end up with running out of time, that, that I am here for you. And I know that my colleagues are too. We are here to help you.
Thank you, Jane. Can we take a couple of questions? Mark has a question.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead, Ed, and then we'll go to Mark. Ed, you're muted.
Okay. Well, while we wait for Ed, I'm gonna jump in. So Jane, you, you make the point that basically we have this state regulatory agency who doesn't really regulate, doesn't really enforce the law, doesn't really, you know, look at what's going on. How then, what is the strategy to shut this facility down? How do we do that? How do we do that?
Well, my, my many, my thirty years of experience would tell you to do this. And that is that what you need is a pack of wild dogs. I call it the pack of wild dog strategy. And that is that you take every opportunity that you can, whether it's a Title V permit, whether it's their stormwater permit, which they just got jerked. So whether it is, you know, a tax, a march down the street, a toxic tort suit, flying plastic chickens, whatever it is, you look for every single strategy that you can find and you unleash it. And a lot of times you, you're never really sure exactly which one of these strategies will ultimately make you victorious. But the things I've seen work are you do everything, you do it all at once, you win and you never know why. And I call that the pack of wild dog strategy.
And how many wild dogs do you tend to need?
I don't know, I'd say like four, five, six. I'd say the many, as many as you can get, but at least four. I think four is a pack, three is kind of light for me, you know? I'd say at least four.
Yes, I have, could you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I have a question for Neil. Neil, do you think there's any methane or carbon dioxide coming from that shale that's being dynamited in that quarry? Is, is, is Neil there?
Yeah, yeah. I, I expect there is some, it could be quite a bit. And, and that is a good issue to raise. But I, I would really emphasize in my view, my experience that the toxic dust, the toxic metals, the toxins, benzophurans, anything toxic coming out of the Norlite stacks is unacceptable. Because even if you're not breathing it in, you can get dust on the grass, on the sidewalk, on the vehicles. And I mean, I've been in communities where I found people tracking the dust into their homes, even a half a mile away. When I was in Europe about twenty years ago, I was in a community a mile away from a giant cement kiln complex. And these people's homes were coated in dust. And I went inside, I saw it everywhere, on their floors, on their tables. I, I said, you, you've got to get the dust under control, don't track it into the homes. But yeah, it's, I, I'm much more concerned about the toxins coming out of the stacks and landing in the community. Because people are going to be tracking it inside their homes. I, I have no doubt about it, it's going to be in their attics. Of course, if there's snow up there at this time, maybe a lot of it's washing away with the snow. But it's going to be on the rooftops because like Jane, I've seen cases where attics were sampled for hexavalent chromium and arsenic. And these metals were showing up, you know, on the rooftops and the, you know, the, in, in the attics and in the homes, okay?
I have one more question, one more question. If you were on Google Earth, you probably saw where a sock hill, it's a stream that goes right through the middle of Norlite. They destroyed it. Now, they have, they have a lake there that they created. It's, I don't know, maybe a couple of hundred feet deep. They have all this product that they're, they're losing off of their conveyors. It's all over the place. All of this is being washed down into this lake that they created, that they pump out. They have to pump that out every so many months. And where do they pump it? Into the creek that goes right through their plant. That creek manders down through and into the Hudson River that goes down to Poughkeepsie, that Poughkeepsie gets their drinking water from. Do you think that that's safe?
No, I, I wouldn't think it's safe. I, I, I'm sure there's all kinds of toxic residues of the metals and chlorinated chemicals and whatever they're burning, that's not going into the product and it's going out the stack. There's all kinds of stuff, it could even be runoff from the plant. You know, I would be very concerned about any kind of toxic discharge from the, the property of the plant, any liquids, any, you know, contaminated soils. So, you know, people should be, I don't know if you can, how close, I don't know if you can go into, in, in a boat and a canoe and try to take some samples. I saw somebody here with a river keeper. Is, is anybody trying to test the water? That's, do they have a, a NPDs discharge permit? You know, I, I, I expect they might, but I don't know. A national pollutant discharge elimination permit from the DEC or from EPA?
Well, yeah, Neil, they just got their NPDs permit jerked because of all these violations. And that's why they made them put it in a dry scrubber. So they don't have a permit anymore. Not allowed, and that means they're not allowed to discharge anything. So like they don't have a permit, they're not allowed to discharge.
Well, and I would also think that fugitive dust from the whole property is going to be so toxic that, that whenever wind blows, and I'm sure it blows up there in Cohoes, New York, that you can have fugitive dusty emissions drifting over into the community that's not coming out of the stacks. And so do they have fugitive dust controls in their permit? I, I would be very concerned about what kind of toxicity of the dust on the, on the pavement, the, the concrete. I've seen these kinds of problems at, at some of these incinerators. So this would be a huge issue because you can have fugitive dust escaping at ground level from the property. You know, when you have the winds blowing right over into the community, you're going to have a ground level fugitive dust carrying toxic materials from the plant, okay? So what kind of inspections are done that look for, you know, well, depends upon what's in the permit, okay? In terms of fugitive dust materials that are, you know, toxic.
Respect for your time, Jennifer has a question.
Yes, I have one question because I'm honestly frustrated with everything that's going on here. I want to, my question is for families that can't afford to move, who do I talk to about moving out of here? Because I feel that me and my children should not have to live in this environment. And I live in public housing where it's because I'm going to fix income. And I can't afford to take me and my family away from here. My son has asthma. I've been sick since I've been here. I want to get out of here and I feel trapped, I feel stuck. And I don't know who to push or who to talk to to get me and my children out, out of here. I feel that we should not have to live with these, with everything that you guys are saying. It's just not fair that we have to live here.
I, I would encourage you to talk to the HUD officials there in Cohoes, New York. Get on the phone, talk to them, tell them that this is a nightmare and this plant emits way too much toxic pollution. And you want HUD to take action and help get you and your family out of there? Because I've seen these kinds of HUD facilities around Texas near big dirty refineries and chemical plants and, and, and they got shut down or, or some of the oil tank farms got moved away. But this is, I would complain to HUD officials and I'd take it all the way to Washington DC and, and put out a press release, okay? Again, like Jane said, pack a wild dogs, you know, especially mothers, mothers like yourself, okay?
Yeah, because they're trying to make it like it's not a big deal. They're like, oh, they're not burning it anymore. I said, I don't care, it's blowing all over. It's, we're still breathing it, breathing it in. My kids have asthma, like it's not, this is not okay, you know? But they're trying to brush it off like it's not a big deal, it is a big deal.
I think the testing of the children's hair could be a very explosive issue. If you show metals in the children's hair that could be coming from Norlite, that, that's very powerful evidence and very explosive, okay?
I just want to show you, hi Jennifer, this, this is Judith Anck and I'm working with a group of local people working on this. Phone number and follow up this week. So we can deal directly with your concerns, put you in touch with people and support you. Children don't, don't have this constant worry, no promises, but we're, you know, very interested in, in helping. So my name is Judith, my number is six oh five.
I, I can, I can give all that to her later.
Okay, all right, thank you, Dave.
Okay, and, and of course, Joe Ritchie, Spurtooga sites has an organization so we can all put our heads together and see if we can help address your concerns.
All right, thank you.
So that's the only thing that I wanted to add actually was that Jennifer, you know, the group that's been working on this, we're going to be having a powwow in the near future in terms of all the different things that we, you know, different ways that we can pursue this. And, and what you're describing, what you're suffering, what you need is a key element of that type of thing. So I would definitely invite you to, you know, join our group in terms of strategizing and, you know, figuring out what role you can, you can do so that you're not, you know, sitting there just feeling helpless and you're being more proactive. And I think that'll just help you a little bit psychologically start with and may speed this up dramatically.
Right, thank you, Dave, yes.
Well, one thing I would suggest is to talk to the DEC about the positivity of having them analyze citizen dust samples. We did this when I worked for the state of Texas. And actually, the dust sampling and photographs that citizens supplied indicated serious violations and non-compliance. And it was because a particular steel foundry was not operating its hundred thousand dollar bag house, okay? So we basically told them if they didn't run their bag house, we were going to fine them. They were fined, but we basically said we would have the attorney general's office get an injunction and shut them down until they, and so they started running their bag house. But the, the owner complained to me, it was very expensive, the electricity and the cost of the, of the fabric material. But anyway, so you, you have a lot more rights, but, but you have to be, you have to speak up, okay?
Yes, thank you.
With respect for everybody's time, we are now over time. Before we go, thank you so much, Jane and Neil, for talking to us today. To get more information on the organizing that's happening, go to facebook.com/lightsoutnorlight. You can also find us at norlite.org. If you want to get more involved in the organizing, you can message us there on Facebook. Or you can, you can email us through norlite.org. And before we go, I'd like to do a brief land acknowledgement. I meant to do it at the beginning, but I'll just say it quickly. This is a land acknowledgement recognizing the, the First Nation peoples that had their land stolen from them. And so I'll just take a moment to recognize that and say that it is with gratitude and humility that I acknowledge that the land upon which the Sanctuary for Independent Media resides, the city of Troy, the city of Cohoes and including the Norlite facility, resides upon the ancestral homelands of the Mohican people who are indigenous peoples of the land of New York. Despite tremendous hardships in being forced from their lands, today their community resides in Wisconsin and is known as the Stockbridge Muncie Community. And I pay honor and respect to their ancestors, past and present, as I commit to building a more inclusive and equitable space for all. Any questions about how to get in touch with us, please drop them in the chat or, you know, I'm going to stay on here for a minute or two after the meeting and we can just chat. So thank you, everybody, for coming.
Okay, thank you, okay.